Council Bluff Savings Bank, our goal is to help you, your families and your businesses grow and prosper for generations. We take pride in our community, whether it's volunteering our time or helping individuals, families and businesses succeed. We provide you with the personal service and attention you deserve. With over 220 years of banking experience, decisions are made locally. We are Council Bluff's people operating at Council Bluff's bank to help Council Bluff's be a better place to work and live. Council Bluff Savings Bank, hometown banking, the way it used to be, member FDIC.
All right, we'll get started. Let's do the agenda first, anything on the consent agenda? I know, Al, you maybe had a question on the TIF stuff.
I talked to Art Hill and he meant my question's just fine. I did have a question for Art with regard to recie the budget amendment. That just concerns the automation, the computer automation upgrades that were going to be made.
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure.
Correct.
Yeah.
Art shared the help with that as well.
Okay, so there wasn't anything other involved, anything else that you're aware of in that budget amendment except for that portion?
Well, there's an operating payroll and related costs.
Right. Yeah, but it's all related to, okay, very good.
We talked and, you know, in past years, we've done a budget amendment at the end of the year. This was new enough and we had money in the bonding issue. Art and I sat down, do we wait till the end of the year? And we decided it was best to let you know right up front what Mark's gone through, the needs and frankly, there's more needs than there is money right now, but he says he, I don't know, Mark, if you have anything you want to say.
Basically, we went through an assessment over the last 30 days and came up with a budget amount for this fiscal year. And that's what the amendment is for. And then I also have plans for next year. So I put together a five-year strategic plan and then I have two tactical year plans that we're working off of. And so we combined two plans together, one for this adjustment and then one for this next fiscal year, which we submitted budget here a couple of weeks ago. So that's what I've been working on. And basically, it's to cover four areas of concern with basically providing the services. One's security, one's modern infrastructure, emerging technologies and the other's just processes in business applications improvement.
Okay. So is there going to be an initial upfront dollar amount here and then the successive years in your?
Yes.
Are going to be pretty much maintenance and, okay.
Yes, yeah, there'll be one, this is round one for infrastructure. This gets the core like servers, storage, networking, things like that for the basically core environment. And then we still have the networked areas, the different locations. So there's 20, roughly 20 locations that are networked together and that equipment's in the next fiscal year.
Terrific.
And he'll be in the regular budget.
That'll be in the regular budget.
Okay, very good, just wanted to get that on the record, appreciate it.
On the minutes, ordinance 6219 didn't actually include who made the motion to the second, if we could add that. Should be Lynn and Melissa.
I just had a question on the finance, on the bills that were paid. There was just one, I'm just curious for a driveway and patio on Frank. Was that in connection to the road being redone or?
I think that's related to community development when they go in and redo property. Because I seem to remember that when I was going through and there was a house that they were loaning money to and it gets paid through community development.
Does it have an address or?
Yeah, 340 Frank.
I don't know that address, I'll pass my hand, but I'll let you know in a minute.
Thank you.
The other questions on the consent agenda? How about the ordinances for second reading? Anything on the resolutions?
On A, so is this in front of us? Okay, so the final draft is the third. I recognize these as Nate's, right? These are yours?
Yeah.
I read through all yours earlier.
It appears the final draft, for now anyway incorporates it.
Incorporates yours, everyone's?
I believe so.
Yeah.
Melissa had a couple things in there that we should put in.
I only had, I only had a few items from two weeks ago.
I just have concerns on that issue with 8D. And I guess my concern would be is that if we, on the policy, and it'd be, oh, no, wait a minute, it's 13, isn't it? The contract, the very last section.
Very last section.
It was 8. Yeah, so my concerns would be, did it change from here?
I, the one I had sent you had, I believe was similar to Al's. The first one had whether an RFP was sought, but since greater than 200,000 requires it anyway in a previous section, I thought that was redundant, so I suggest, so in this draft, it takes it out.
It's back in, the one, the final one that we had. First, it was out, then it's in. You're talking about item D in section eight?
Yes. The previous one used to be?
Greater than 200,000 required.
This one's?
Something about RFP.
You have three?
Whether requests for proposals were sought. And the one I've got marked final draft, it's not there. And it was an Al's suggestion too. And I got to thinking though, if you go back to a previous section, it requires an RFP anyway.
Right.
So it seems like asking at that point's redundant, so that's why I suggest taking that one out.
The only real concern I have is naming the people and the companies or the firms or the people. And this is that, I have concerns that people will start doing things like pumping up resumes in areas because they'll know what the, you know, perceived weaknesses are of another company. They may quit altogether if they perceive that doing this is going to impact their business because it's not typical that you would name the ones and then, and then name in the council packet why they weren't chosen, what their shortcomings are or whatever. I don't mind if we're provided the information and maybe it's done in a, you know, I just don't think I want engineering companies to be named out and saying, well, they didn't qualify because of this and that. I think there's going to be some real reluctance to place those bids or proposals. And I think other companies are going to use that then to edit how they're preparing their proposals and packets and maybe inflating resumes to fill the bill.
Well, and I agree with that. I, this is a policy, a guideline. I just don't want to see us, you know, governed to the nth degree. The information is always available if we ask for the information. It would even be part of the public discussion here at study session, which is an open and public forum. So I just, I think, I think we go overboard in that regard.
I think the final draft, I did try to, well, the current draft, I don't want to say final, it's presumptuous, even though it's what it's marked. But I agree, I think to a large degree with what both of you said. So that's, that's why, as it's currently drafted, it just asks if the contract's greater than 200,000 requires at least this information, whether proposals were requested from, who do we request it from? The pre-qualified list, other people specifically invited, did we advertise, et cetera? And then it said the names who submitted proposals and then who served on the selection committee. And then for, my intention, and I certainly won't speak for anyone else, but my intention is narrative to say, of all those criteria that are listed, I think it's Roman IV. In given cases, I know department heads, I think I can remember Greg saying this a couple of times. You know, different cases, different projects, certain things will, certain criteria will weigh more than others. So my intent there is just to find out, okay, in this case, what were you thinking in the sense of broad brush? Okay, yeah, on this one, we thought these criteria most are important. We picked Joe Blow because he and/or his firm met all these. I wasn't expecting, as this is written, to hear, hear quote unquote negative or anything about the people who weren't selected.
Yeah, I don't see that either, that it's looking for what were the predominant factors and that drove a selection recommendation. And that doesn't in and of itself draw out negatives of a company that, that was not found to be best among, among those submitted. And that level of information is what is commonly, commonly made, made public for state contracts in my, my experience in federal contracting process as well. So I think what we're seeking to do is provide a level of transparency in that firms that want to be included in the contracting process feel as though that they are provided an opportunity and we're given due consideration. So again, this is, this is just a basic matter of transparency that's, that's being sought rather than calling out anybody.
Does that address your concerns? Certainly, I think as we're creating legislative history right here, I do not personally want to see negatives. If we didn't choose why company because, I don't know, we didn't let something or other, you know, I don't want to slander libel people.
Yeah, I don't either, and that was my bigger concern. I'm all in favor of the transparency. I didn't know if maybe, you know, if they named how many companies submitted proposals and then why that company was chosen instead of actually naming them. Because again, if they say, well, you know, they had, we selected this company because they have, you know, strong sewer engineering or whatever it is, then is the implication the others didn't?
I think the positive of that is that if a firm is found to have particular qualifications, then you know, the competitive nature of the open market is going to drive the other firms to say, hmm, so what can we do to enhance our product, if you will? What can we do to become more, more competitive in these city projects? And ultimately, that's going to avert to the benefit of the public and the city.
So for clarification, because Nate, I thought you mentioned that 8D was out of there because in section four or five, it already talked about that. So my final version does have?
Just one bullet point of 8D.
I took out what was originally called 8D1 and then shifted everything forward. So there used to be five subparts there, now there are only four. I got rid of the original number one.
The original number one.
Which was a request for an RFP because other places it says that we must, we shall get an RFP.
So why ask if they follow the law elsewhere? That seems redundant and of course, they're going to follow the law. So I, I have a hard time seeing if some, if a firm has, I guess I'd like to hear more about, if a firm has applied and doesn't get selected. I understand that that means that the selection committee thinks somebody else, for whatever reason, hope, I would assume is better qualified for this particular project. I don't think, I don't think, certainly that's, that's not going way to the other side of, we didn't pick these people because, and I agree, we ought not to do that, but that they applied, seems to me, it's just a fact that ought to be listed.
Have we gotten any, and I notice we have like less people than we normally do. Usually have a couple of engineering firms being represented. Anybody have any idea if this is typical in other communities, if this is what they're used to? Or are they going to be saying, wait a minute, you know, I'm not comfortable with that? Or has anybody had any feedback from anybody on it besides that?
I've had some feedback from, and I don't hear the professions asking for this, but.
No, in fact, I've had a couple said that they had some concerns about it before, not this writing.
We do list the companies who bid for like street projects and things like that, so if it's along, if it's along the same.
That's based on, strictly on monetary comp.
Right.
Oh, it's, that's true, it's not qual, well, it's sort of qualifications, but it's also.
It's a bid number, it's whoever has the best bid that seems reasonable. I mean, I, I'm not totally opposed to it. I just, I just have, I'd like to hear from some of the local companies or companies that work in this process to whether or not this is going to be deemed to be negative against their firms if they're not selected and they're being named. You know, I just don't know if that's, and of course, I didn't know that that was typical in state, you know, that the state does that. So this may be something that they're completely used to.
You know, I didn't look at very many cities, certainly not across Iowa. I looked, I'm just, I'm more familiar with state and federal and they do.
Yeah, and if that's typical, then I'd.
I don't know, I've never seen a city not do that, but then again, a lot of cities don't have this sort of policy either. So I don't want to overstate all my case.
Those companies have probably done work for state or federal government, so they're going to be used to that. I just, like I say, that's not something I'm familiar with. You know, the only feedback I got was, wow, you know, and that was clear back when it was, looked like they were going to say why they didn't.
Yeah.
Why they weren't selected. But you know, if you're not going to go in and put in any negatives, I don't know that it's a big deal.
Well, I would guess that maybe this evening, because there's only one reading on this, that hopefully, if anyone does have any comments, that they show up tonight and let us know. I didn't get any.
It's not too much different than what you've already asked staff to do.
Yeah, and I haven't, I haven't received any, any feedback on it.
And this was complimentary about what they did at the last meeting, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, they seem very similar.
I do like the additional, they really have made a fantastic, I was going to say good faith, but way beyond good faith, it's a fantastic.
I think the only thing they didn't include last time was who else was considered as far as naming those and.
That's true. But I, I think though, it was, it was a lot, wasn't it a lot less than 200? I don't remember, but I want to say it was, but anyway.
Yeah, and it was, you know, just the initial proposal only to apply that process to those over $200,000. Because I think as a, as a business practice, that's where you're likely to run into the most questions.
We got one, 5B on the agenda tonight that does basically the same thing.
Yeah, that's a start to providing, it doesn't go all the way, but it's a good start.
Yeah, they started that last month, which was really appreciated.
You know, and I like this because it does give quite a bit of flexibility to, to the executive branch, the mayor and the department heads for the ones that are relatively smaller. Because I agree, I don't, you know, if there's a $10,000, which in the whole scheme of things is a relatively small project, I don't want them to jump through lots of hoops. But if, you know, it's 500,000, it'd be nice to know all these things. Just so, I just want to avoid people ever having a legitimate reason to question the process. You know, I don't think there's anything wrong with the process, I just don't want, I want, I want the perception also to be so.
I'm not uncomfortable with it. I think if we get a lot of companies saying that they have a real problem with it and have a good reason why, maybe we could revisit it later, but I don't.
I would agree, yeah, I'd agree.
Other questions on that? Any other questions on the resolutions?
On 5E, the, two questions. How many years will this Wi-Fi consortium be in, in existent? Is it a temporary or? Sorry?
Five.
Just five years?
If I, Dave.
This is five with an option to renew.
Okay.
And you'll option renew, I think.
And then the funding, it said private and public funds will be sought. Do we, we have any idea what the funding is and is the city?
Dave and Mark, why don't you come up then? Those who don't know, Dave, he's in charge of the Council Bluff School's IT programs.
I am, I'm David Fringer, Mr. Mayor and council members. Funding wise, there are members of the community who have indicated their interest in funding such a project, including corporate contributions from, from Google and the Iowa West Foundation. You'll notice is a named member of the, of the Governance Council and they are also interested in this project. And while no specific funds have been promised, there is no plan to spend money that does not exist. So it would be the, the plan of this organization to find money first and then expand the wireless, not vice versa.
You know, Google has historically given us an, I think it's an annual allocation. The first thing we did was Bayless Park, then we did the Hunter Block, then we did Hanifin Park. And this year, they came to me and said, we're going to get our allocation and we're going to go on down Main Street. And I went, Main Street? Why would you go down Main Street? There's South Main, there's nobody down South Main. Why not use it somewhere where, and I don't know, if you did talk to me, David, or somebody, talk to me about the opportunity, maybe to do something in the West End. Kind of additional information, which I think maybe is not as relevant today because things are changing around this additionally, but there is franchise fee we get from the internet. So it ultimately will reduce the amount of franchise fee we get if we provide free Wi-Fi. But there certainly are benefits, ancillary benefits from doing that too. One, we're progressive, two, we maybe get some opportunities we didn't have before, but.
Will it be similar to what's going on now? Because like if you're inside the building down on the Hunter Block, you really don't get the Wi-Fi.
We understand that issue and there needs to be a fix unfortunately. I think the, my understanding from talking to Wendy is any new money can't be used to make that fix. But they didn't do, the installation that was done, you guys are the expert on what I'm talking.
Basically, I think what, what the premise was, was outdoor. So parks, public areas versus trying to get penetration inside a building. Because there's different construction techniques on buildings and how effective you can get Wi-Fi into that space from an outdoor area is questionable. So one of the things that we're doing with this agreement is looking at what is, what is the scope of it? And we've defined four phases. The other is what is the cost of it? So we've sent that out for a RFP proposal to see what is it going to cost to do a phase? And then we'll come back and assess, does this make sense, yes or no, and where do we go from there?
And so you would be attempting to get it inside of people's homes from, no, it would still be exterior?
It'd still be outdoors, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd be problematic to try to do that. And then to support it would be the biggest hurdle, quite frankly.
So what's the intended use then of it for the school kids as far as the school districts concerned?
Certainly, some of, some of the language in the agreement states where technically and financially feasible. And would there be penetration at some, in some neighborhoods into some homes? Certainly, that would most likely happen. We're not willing to, to create a service level agreement to promise that across the city. Right now, every student in the Council Bluff Community Schools in grades three through 12 have a laptop. And that laptop is usable obviously on our facilities and in places where there's free public Wi-Fi. So the more Wi-Fi, the better. We're willing and, and plan to broadcast our internet bandwidth to our students through the, through the same access points. So if a, if a student was in a public area, indoors or outdoors, depending on the, depending on the place, they would have access to both the school district's secure wireless network, which is content filtered, et cetera, for, for the purposes of young people and computers on the internet, whereas the city's Wi-Fi is, is for everyone to use, so.
Meaning unsecure?
Unfiltered. Unfiltered.
Okay, okay.
And it's part of the requirements from the user funding.
All right, okay, so they, so they require it not to be.
Filtered.
Or secure, got it, okay.
I would also suggest that the amount of bandwidth available is not going to replace somebody's home connection if they use Netflix or if they're gamers or have, you know, any high-end kind of, kind of computer application. The kind of bandwidth that we provide is more for productivity applications, basic web browsing, email, et cetera. It's not for watching movies or playing, or playing games on your Xbox.
Do I have it right that when, if you enter internet addresses with the secure protocol, the HTTPS colon, if you do that for any page, will that make over an unsecured network? Will that make a secured connection or is it still risky?
Well, that's a secured connection.
Is it?
Yeah, it's a certificate-based connection.
So it scrambles it on both?
With the S.
So it somehow scrambles it?
Yeah, but not all websites are capable of an HTTPS connection. Those that are provide an encryption or encryption key that scrambles the data as it goes across the internet and then puts it back together on the other end. All websites do not provide HTTPS connectivity at various Wi-Fi provider.
I noticed recently that it looks like the beta of Google's, as a matter of fact, their Chrome, it looks like it's going to go to some sort of encryption as a default rather than just an option in their next version.
Yeah, not all connections are shit.
I think.
May I ask some questions better?
No.
No.
You know, Rose Jim, you've been there 14 years.
So the funding, the funding amount, you don't, you don't know? Sorry, you don't know at this point, the, the funding amounts required or anything like that? So you'll, you'll get into that down, down the line?
That, that's correct. The best we could provide is an educated guess. And, and that educated guess could also taint the bid process. You know, we don't want to say what we think it might cost.
Right.
We want, we want a number of people to tell us what they think it would cost to provide. And then we will, we'll take, we'll take those responses and apply our, we're technically and financially feasible criteria to it and see what we can do.
So is this something that, that, I mean, I know we're getting into the next budget year. Are we allocating a certain percentage on our, or is it our staff member involvement?
But you know, conceivably, in the future, there will be some costs to run it. So that's one of the things we need to find out.
Okay.
Well, and yeah, I was going to ask a question about that because 6E, or I'm sorry, 6A under the agreement calls for a budget by January 15th. And so I was just going to wonder how that, how that process worked. I know that.
Budget for you guys, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, which means.
For the government, the governing committee.
Yeah, the new 28E.
Yeah, which means that at some point, that there's going to have to be an allocation made from, from the city hypothetically.
Or your first year budget could in theory be zero if you're still getting up and going.
Could be zero, it won't be. I'm willing to state that, that there are funds available and we're aware of those funds. And this process is, is required for us to have access to those funds by the end of the year.
Again, Google has made a commitment, Iowa West is interested.
That's correct.
You know, I think the mayor's, he committed absolutely right to get the schools and hopefully other local government entities will be interested in eventually doing this collaborative, sometimes called 28E. That's just the chapter of the Iowa code that allows governments to work together to save, to increase knowledge and save costs. It's fantastic.
Exactly.
So going back to my question on the, on the length of time, I mean, I know that the agreement said initial five-year term. So it's just, you're just basically a year-by-year basis after that. There's no, it's too early to say this is going to be going on for 10 years because technology changes and the needs may change and that's just kind of why.
Exactly, the, and I would defer to the city attorney who helped us draft this as well as the school districts attorneys. I believe that the five-year term is standard for a 28E agreement, then extensions thereafter is my understanding.
It's just to give it a fair shot, you have to have some term, justify the budgets, the numbers you're talking about. You have to have a commitment to be trying to do this project for at least a five-year period of time.
We really need to understand the cost before we get there and that's what, that's what we'll do a lot of the.
You know, I, I'm sorry, you know, I'd gotten a few questions, particularly online ironically, about the focus areas and could you explain, as I understand it, and if this is the case, I'm very much in favor of it, focusing on areas of greatest need and currently areas that just really don't have a lot of internet access so the kids aren't able to get on there and read and explore or do their homework. And so it's, it's to give them a decent chance at an education like everybody else, is that?
That is exactly correct. And phase one, as identified in our RFP document, is bordered on the east by the railroad yards, on the south by Broadway, on the west by either 23rd or 25th Street, I'd have to review the document, and by the interstate on the north. So it's that area north of Broadway, along 16th Street, including the Lakin Campus and that neighborhood is, that's, that's the first phase. Whether it's financially feasible to do that whole section, we'll find out when the, when the numbers come in. But you know, that also includes the, the sports center area, all that public park area, et cetera, in the vicinity of Wilson Middle School, Roosevelt, the Lakin Campus, et cetera. Then we would, you know, where technically feasible, flat land is much more technically feasible than our hills. So we were going to work west to the river, go to the south and come back east along the south of Broadway, essentially identifying the west end of town first with no plans to stop if it's financially feasible and technically feasible. But the dollars will determine all of that.
One legitimate concern I heard from someone in the audience was if it's only Council Bluff School District, then does Louis? Bluffs School District, then does Louis Central?
That's a great question. Intentionally, Section Eight agreement with other school corporations, government entities was included. It's the intention that any school district or community, and for the school district, Carter Lake is, is part of the Council Bluffs Community Schools, as is Crescent. So the intention was that at some point, the city of Carter Lake would join and the Louis Central School District would join. I'm, I'm sure that both are interested entities. And I know that the Louis Central School District is, because we, we've had conversations about it. And you know, they're very interested in the project when it gets closer to their territory. So absolutely.
What, what about the, the religious schools?
The religious schools would obviously have access to the free public Wi-Fi.
Okay.
Not necessarily to the, to the Council Bluffs Community Schools broadcast of our, of our bandwidth. I don't know what would prevent, I don't know the law about twenty-eight E agreements. It is government entities. So a non-public school district probably could not join a twenty-eight E agreement. Am I correct?
I'd have to double check that. I mean, they're gonna benefit from it either way. I mean, they're gonna have access to it.
We don't have a philosophical barrier to that at all. I don't know if there's a legal one.
But depending on the coverage, they could, they could access the, the internet.
Oh, absolutely.
And they could, they could very well log into an HTTPS system if, if the signal is strong enough or...
Absolutely.
However that works. I'm not a computer person.
Absolutely.
Other questions? Thank you.
Comment or question, I guess, for, for Dick Wade. If you could maybe ask some of your staff or, or folks that are in the know to do some research on, on potent, potential legal issues result, surrounding this. While, oh, working for the Department of Defense, I know anytime we, we logged on to any network, we had an upfront caution. Before you log in, you know you're being monitored by the National Security, Security Agency for obvious reasons. Well, if you log, if you log on to an unsecure network, you're subject to monitoring by just about every hacker that's, that's logged on to that particular network. And, and I'm not sure that people really understand the level of risk that they put themselves with in, in using a device on an unsecure network.
It's like where we log on to the library's computer or the one in Bayless Park, you have this disclaimer that comes on that you have to accept the terms and conditions and all that kind of stuff is kind of covered in there.
So...
And there's a REIT app that...
Well, yeah.
They're doing to have though.
And, and yeah, that's, that's something that we may want to just give some additional highlighting, because you know that there's always that, that potential during the League of Cities Conference. I attended that session on, on cybersecurity. And the nice FBI investigator was showing us how easy it was. And he was logging on. He got into the public school district site and was having a great time. And then started pulling pictures down off of individual smartphones and stuff. And I was kind of frightening with the amount of ease with which he was able to do that. So I wanna make sure that we're not providing a false sense of security to, to the public on this.
Don't get me wrong. I, I, I personally would not recommend people like to do banking or things of that nature in an unsecured network. But you know, if you're, if you're reading the paper online or something, you know...
We're collecting pictures.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's, it certainly is. Use it at your own risk.
All right. Anything else on the resolutions?
On five G, is this the individual that was, that was involved before?
No.
No, this is a new guy?
This is the clerical and technical employees, CWA. In the past, Cindy Lynch had done it.
Right.
No contract's been negotiated since Cindy has left here. There is labor attorney, Matt Brick, I think, is...
Maybe that's what I was thinking about. I knew there was someone.
They've consulted. There was some discussion about bringing Matt in to do this. We don't think that the complexities would require that. It'd be very expensive to do that. We have him as a resource. Graham works for the city and, and does the civil service and other responsibilities. So I don't think it's gonna be ongoing. We are soon to be in the process of, of hiring a, a new director of the Human Resources Department. And at that point, we'll make some decisions. But this is, we got notice that they wanna begin negotiations about a week ago. And I think we've got thirty days to, to start that process once we're given notice, so.
Okay. I, I guess I was thinking of...
He's an attorney upstairs in Dick's office.
Okay. And I was thinking of the other guy.
He's one of the mayor's people, isn't he?
Yeah, yeah. Well, but I was, I knew that someone was involved. And I couldn't, I didn't know if that was the right person.
We'll have that, Matt Brick, as consultation if we need.
Okay. Thank you for clarification.
Other questions on the resolutions?
Could I ask a question? If, if in fact, we go with this amended, I believe, Matt, you had said before, do we, do we wanna do it in the nature of, in essence, using the previous one as the, wiping it out and then amending it by, by putting in the whole new d- rather than doing it one by one?
Can we just call this final draft?
Yeah, if you wanna prove that, call that final draft.
Can we do that?
It's likely after you make that move.
Okay. I just wanted, I didn't want to do every single line.
I didn't know if you had any more changes in addition to that. And if you did, I was gonna say then make those in the form of amendments. But if, if you don't, let's just use this as a final draft.
This is not like an ordinance that you've already approved one consideration.
Right.
I just didn't wanna do it by line.
No.
I'm here all night.
Yeah.
So for everyone here, for your clarification, that's the one with the final draft sticking.
Is this the one that we got today from TCT, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's the name, but, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Other resolution questions? Any applications for permits and cancellation questions? Anything else off the agenda?
Yeah, I have one thing. I was wondering if Chief Carmody could talk to us a little bit about the constant, you know, crime stats for... Oh, yeah. Council Bluffs. I have some questions about that. And I was hoping maybe just to get your feedback on it.
What kind of question do you have?
Well, my questions are, I know that the reason that we report in the manner that we do for FBI, not all cities do it, but we do it. And we're eligible for some grant monies by virtue of doing that. Are the grant monies significant enough to continue doing that when it seems to rebound on us? You know, economic development-wise, this is not good. Site selectors put this in their files and it's very hard to undo it once it's out.
Are you talking about the recent information that was released?
Yes.
Okay. There's a couple of challenges there. For us to deal with the, with the issues that we have in the community, we have to have an accurate picture. Whether that's given to the FBI or how we deal with, how we compile that is up to us. And to use that to build the, the plan, the operational plan to deal with those issues. So we need to do that.
Sure.
The challenge we have is when people take that data and twist it or spin it to their benefit for corporate use and compile it together, there are issues that we're dealing with in the community. That's why I have a job. I've tried to work myself out of a career for thirty-one years. It hasn't worked yet. We'll keep working at that. But it helps us to, to have that clear picture. I don't believe in hiding behind those things. And when it comes to economic development, when you can show those people that are interested in the community and what we're doing, the partnerships that we have in the community, the efforts that we have in crime prevention, the efforts that we have in investigations and follow-ups and things like that, I think they buy into that as well. That's been my experience.
Well, and that's if you get an opportunity to give them that information.
Sure.
You know, I, I want the crime stats to be out there and I want them to be accurate. And I want them to be on the crime mapping and everywhere else. That doesn't seem to be where the problem stems from. The problem stems from the postings that they pull off the FBI without any of the disclaimers or disclosures. And that's why I'm asking. It, it isn't that I don't want it out there. I do. I always refer people to the crime mapping system, the Facebook page for the Council Bluffs Police. But when things like this end up, and especially when it gets out on a national level, we don't have an opportunity to then go back and show what the community is doing.
Sure.
And once it's out there, it's out there. So I'm just, that's where my questions come from. More in a, by doing this reporting, are we hurting ourselves more than helping ourselves when it gets reported to that particular site, rather than all the full information that's on our site?
Sure. I, I don't know. The, the benefit is too great for us in grant dollars. I think it's required for every federal grant that we receive. And we have to comply with that in order to get those monies. And I'm not willing to give that up because it's, it helps us. It helps us accomplish those goals. But taking that data and, and using that information to plan the operations, like I said, or to, to paint that picture ourselves, rather than wait for somebody to do it for us, is I think the best way to approach it.
So do we have some, I guess my other question would be then, the numbers that are being reported on the FBI site, you know, people then, it looks like Council Bluffs is more dangerous than say Omaha or Chicago. And why is that? And how do we address that particular issue then?
It's because they've taken it out of context. The challenge that you face is you're looking at, when you compare us to other cities in Iowa, you have to compare apples to apples. In other words, you can't compare us to a city who's isolated by themselves. It's not part of a metro area. It doesn't have the same demographics, same economic conditions. There's too many factors. It's a, it's a three-dimensional chess game, if you will, on how it comes together. And if you don't take all those into consideration and use other tools to, to test the metrics or where we're at with the community, then we're not gonna get a full picture of it. And that's what we have to get ahead of ourselves.
Did that last article make it look like we were more dangerous than Des Moines or any of the other metro cities in Iowa? And is that true?
The web posting made it look like we're the worst city in Iowa. I don't think that's accurate. The question you have to ask is the people in the community, do you feel safe? And it doesn't matter what the numbers are. It's like we tried to express in, in the conversation with KPTM. And I wish I could have had a chance to talk to the paper before they posted their response, but I didn't get that opportunity. If, if you're one of the people that are a victim in that crime, then it doesn't matter what the numbers say. You feel that it's unsafe. We have to separate those numbers out. We have to accurately compare ourselves to those areas that are comparable and then determine whether that's safe based upon how you feel, how our citizens feel. And that's where we need to move to.
But, but it still doesn't help the, the people that are looking to potentially move to our community, move their families or, or move their business. And when I saw that article in the, in the Non-Preal, and I, I did, I was gonna bring this up and I forgot. So I'm glad you did. I mean, it listed probably six or seven communities in Iowa that I was shocked that, that shared this bad rating with Council Bluffs. And I, I think it's, I mean, it's...
Including the community I came from and other towns that were similar in size. What they're doing is they're cherry picking and saying, when you pile all these numbers together, this is how bad it is. They're trying, without faming the company, they're trying to show you need our service.
Right.
That's the goal. So how, the, the question, like Sharon said, is how do we get past that? How do we get ahead of it? And I think it's by creating the message ourselves and doing operations, doing projects in the community, talking to citizens, doing it from your table and making sure the citizens know how safe they are.
It, it also appeared as though that there might be some variance in how data was being entered. If, if you will, some communities were, were perhaps more disciplined in, in how it, it entered data. And, and when you have different ways that data can be, can be input, you have people of different experience levels, there's always a different opportunity for anomaly. And that's...
And that can be a dangerous road to go down, because I don't wanna accuse another community of not accurately entering their data. But obviously it impacts how they look.
Well, to be charitable, you know, other communities may black the experience with, with that particular data input system. And, and I think it was not too long ago that, that, that we switched systems and, and how we were inputting that, that data. And that probably contributed to...
We have cleaned up the process. You're absolutely right.
Yep. That's how it, that's certainly how it came across to me.
And this is two-year-old data that they're using, isn't it?
That's the most current data that's in the FBI's database. There is a thirteen, twenty-thirteen version that's out that's preliminary, but they won't close that out until the end of this year. They're always two years behind. And the disclaimer right there on the website says, "Do not use this as a benchmark oven by itself." And when businesses are looking, and I encountered the same issues in Fort Dodge. We had businesses that were looking at us. They would talk to us, "What's the community like?" They look at the whole picture. And that's, I'm the same way. I, I wanna make sure that we have our best foot forward and we have the best image of how it actually is here. Because if you come here and you see things, you're gonna realize it's not what the website says.
Correct.
On a, I mean, I don't know how much it would help, but maybe slightly. Can you do a story, Tim, with Chief Carmody's side of the story? You know, can we kinda do a follow-up story on it? And you can maybe explain that to, I mean, what you just explained to us, I think would be great for the public as a whole to be able to open that up and read like, oh, here's really the, because a lot of people don't hear that side of it. They just are seeing these things on Facebook and online. And then it's like, the world's come to an end and...
Social media kinda spins things sometimes.
Yeah. So I think if we could have an article that we can then all share that will then get shared around, it would help.
Especially on the heels of, of Omaha having what, four shootings in the last twenty-four hours? I mean, I don't, I, I can imagine that people feel the same.
But that's one of the challenges too. When you see, when you see where the shooting incidents or the crime incidents are in different communities, and Omaha's an example of that, they portray it as being a very dangerous community. When you look at it as a whole...
Right.
It's particular portions of the community.
Right, right.
It's not the whole town.
Yeah.
So we have to be very careful about how we use that. We wanna make sure the metrics are clean when we use that data to plan. Because otherwise, we're, if we don't have a solid foundation, we're not gonna be able to build on it.
Absolutely.
You know, I'd like us to look, because I imagine airing the early budgeting for the next fiscal year, the, the police area representatives, the PAR unit, and looking at seeing what, if, if it's possible financially to, to increase the presence, to, to fully staff that.
It's already in the works.
Excellent.
The budget, the, the draft budget that we've submitted already, in fact, we're making that change this January with the stipulation that we don't lose any more staff.
True.
We're already, have two people in the academy right now. So we're down to there, or we're two slots below that. So we're very short-staffed. And I don't see that changing in the, the short term. I may be coming back asking for more help with regard to that.
Okay.
But that's one of the things that we all talked about when I first got here. And that was one of the first changes that we made in staffing. And we did it internally without any internal costs, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
One other question I have then is that since the FBI is two years behind on their postings, which is not helpful to us, is there a way, I mean, we have the data that's been submitted to them, right?
We provide it.
Can we, can, is that posted where I can say, hey, here's the newest data, just go to this web address and, on whether it's Police Department or...
That's one of my short-term goals. With our new records management system, we'll have the ability to post that data on a monthly basis or a quarterly basis. The thing we have to be careful about is even when we compare one year to the next, there's trends that go with that. There may be on a series of events that, that caused a bump in that, to increase, or there, it may have decreased for the same reason. So we have to be careful about how we frame that picture. I don't want us to, to paint a picture that's not accurate.
Absolutely.
I'm very, I wanna be very transparent and make sure it's accurate.
Thank you.
So with regard to that, the new RMS system is up and running. We anticipate being able to add that dashboard to give us more data to, to both post that information, but also to do more effective patrols and to do directed operations. That component should be added in January. Because they wanted ninety days of clean data to be able to capture, to start doing those predictions and use that information. We're getting there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Surely caught what you're saying, but you're gonna use crime statistics to staff the Police Department in areas where you think there's particular problems and...
We wanna use crime data and, and intelligent information to both plan operations, to conduct operations, to follow up on them, to investigate them. The information that we capture is not, in the old system, wasn't readily accessible. So you struggled to go in and find out a particular method of operation or suspect information, whether, you know, specific criteria. This new system will help us do that more effectively. So we'll be more efficient and more effective, hopefully. Anything else?
No, thank you. Thank you.
Other questions? We'll see you at seven.
We don't have executive session.
Oh, we do have executive session. I'm sorry. We'll see you at seven.